Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the April 9th, 2019 City Council meeting, beginning at 7:30. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cannon.
Here.
Bud Metz.
Present.
Majikis.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
De Estes.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Seven present and none absent, there is a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable and television channels. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from the March 19th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Baner. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any corrections, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. That brings us to the Mayor's Report. There are only a couple of things that have happened this week. First, for those of you that attended the chili cook-off at Reps', Chief, kudos. I'm told that he won. Both Chiefs, kudos. However, Chief Nowacki, I'm told that you got the gold medal, and plus so, applause. And I'm told that the Fire Department will try harder next year.
[laughter]
Thank you, thank you, Chief. The only others, I did have a discussion with, as some of you know, I've been trying, I'm moving forward with a Restaurant Association with our new restaurants coming in that will be run independently just by the restaurants, so that more of these activities can happen in the city. Are there any ward reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Majikis.
Thank you. First off, I'd just like to say, I just had the pleasure of coming from, and it's still going on right now, over at Reps', a gathering that is honoring one of our residents that I'm sure most of you would know the name, Mr. Brian Anderson, who gave, has given a lot of himself, served our country, a heck of a guy, someone that I'm proud to call my friend. And he's being honored right now by USA Cares, and the group there, it's amazing, the amount of people. But I just wanted to give a shout-out to Brian, all he's done for the city, our country, friends, family. I think we should all look at him and how he lives his life, to try and be like he is. He's amazing. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Brian, and thank you for everything he's done. Also, I just wanted to put out there, I did receive quite a few emails, pretty much today, as I'm sure other aldermen did, but there was one from a resident that said she could not be, she's not big into public speaking, and would not be here and stuff, but she asked that it please be noted that she believes that we should approve the Taylor Morrison Square plans, went on and on for numerous reasons, but I just wanted to make it noted that she did bring that out there. I have other emails. I appreciate everybody's feedback, whether you're for it or against it. I also had someone else, who, I'm not going to say names or anything like that, but went around and talked to multiple residents, and said out of his little poll he did himself, that 80% of the residents he spoke to were in favor, and 20% not. So, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ward reports? This brings to the session of the meeting, that is open to the public for 20 minutes. In order to secure the rights of the citizens to a fair and just representation before their elected officials, and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's businesses, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disrupt, or disturb, or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the City Council. For rules of procedures, the public is to address the City Council, and the fact that no member of the City Council responds does not mean that the City Council, or any member thereof, agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to obtain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the City Council this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the City Council shall state their name and address for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the City Council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city businesses. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officials present. Discussions shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect. Profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. There are a number of signatories tonight, just as a reminder, there is 20 minutes that is available, so I'm asking everyone to be mindful of that, because the more time you use, not, everyone may not have the opportunity to speak. The first signatory is Charlotte Rebarcek, please. And, thank you, and for the record, name and address, please.
My name is Charlotte Rebarcek. I live at 3,000 Owl Drive.
Thank you.
I keep hearing that residents are against the proposed development of Taylor Morrison Townhomes, and that the aldermen are not listening. I am here this evening to represent those of us who are in favor of the development. Due to a very loud opposition, I feel that we are the ones who are unheard. We have looked at that empty lot for too many years. Though we would love nothing more than to fill it with businesses, we realize this is just wishful thinking. At a time when big-box stores are closing left and right, not just in our community, but nationwide, it is unrealistic to think we will draw a big-box store to our small community. We do not have the population to support a large store, nor do we have easy access to and from the expressway. Furthermore, we do not own the land, and cannot pick who chooses to develop it. In addition, I have heard that the plan does not have enough green space. Whether it does or doesn't is the decision of the purchasers of these units, not the residents of Rolling Meadows. If someone wants green space, they can buy one of our lovely Rolling Meadows homes, or visit one of the many beautiful parks this community has to offer. I have also heard that this development is too dense, but it is no denser than the Lexington Development, and the homeowners there seem to like it. Who are we to decide how close together people want to live? Cities like Arlington Heights and Palatine have built high-rise condos, row homes, and the like, and people do choose to live in those homes. Furthermore, I am aware that there are other ideas out there, of what could be done with this property. However, they are just ideas. There is no actual plan with financial backing to make this happen, and I am not in favor of our city purchasing the space to make it happen. Our city has enough projects to take care of without becoming a landlord to this lot. Is this project ideal? Not for everyone, but I would also say that there is no project that will please everyone. Let's move forward, welcome our new neighbors, and get those storefronts filled. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward with it. We appreciate you stepping forward. The next signatory is Laura Schelmuller? I'm sorry, you can correct me, I could read the end of it.
Nice job.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Put your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Laura Schelmuller. I live at 208 Lexington Lane. I'm asking the council to vote to approve the Taylor Morrison Plan to build the town homes at the former Dominic site. If you look around other northwest suburbs that are redeveloping in a positive direction, it's because they allowed new, population-dense housing into their city centers. This continues around us, Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Des Plaines. These other towns are welcoming these developments, and as a result, their city's centers are thriving. In order for a city center to thrive, you need population density. I do not understand why this community seems scared by this concept. Just recently, Mount Prospect approved the building of apartments at the corner of Route 83 and Central. That land has been vacant for years, and was a pain point in their community. They are continuing to add more housing in a downtown that already has quite a few residential dense developments. Notice now, they have wonderful restaurants, a successful farmer's market, street events, and shops. It's because there are lots of people living in close proximity to support these ventures. This current property in our community has sat vacant for far too long. It's an eyesore and a blight. If this piece of land were attractive for retailers or other types of business, it would have been developed in that fashion long ago. Real estate developers aren't going to sit on a piece of vacant land if it were viable to build. They don't make money that way. Let's stop dreaming that a retail or entertainment mecca is coming in there with the way things currently are. I've heard many in the community say, "Build it, and they will come." That is a slogan from a movie, and it's based in sentimentality. Real estate development doesn't work that way. Developers are not going to risk spending millions if they don't have the data to back up their plans. I know that Mr. Gallo has intentions of stopping this once he is seated as mayor. I respectfully disagree with his views on this issue. He has cited an academic paper written by a Harper College economics professor to justify his reasoning of why there should not be residences built there. This paper was written in 2002, 16 years ago, and pre-recession. Additionally, the data in this paper is all from the state of Michigan. It has nothing to do with our area, and the conclusions from it cannot be applied to where we live. I have also heard people comment that additional residences will be a drain on our city services and infrastructure. For every study that says that, I can do a Google search to find the opposing data. I have also heard the complaint, "This is the last piece of land for retail in Rolling Meadows." We have several empty storefronts and retail strip malls along Kirchhoff. Additionally, if there was a boom in business in central Rolling Meadows, there is room in the Jewel Strip Mall for outlot development. I'm sure the owners of that property would welcome the chance to build more if there was a surge of business in the area. The bottom line is that we need more people in our city center to attract retail, business, and restaurants. Additionally, the housing being proposed is set at a higher price point than the existing homes in the Kirchhoff corridor. The demographics of these residents will make business and retail development even more attractive for business owners. Many in the community seem to be waiting for Shangri-La to arrive. It is time to face reality and to compromise. Please let the owners of this land build what they have the legal right to do, as the current zoning allows. Thank you for my time.
Thank you for coming forward this evening. Mr. Fritz Duda? Name and, obviously, we need your address.
Certainly. Fritz Duda, 564 Maple Street, Winnetka, Illinois. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm with Clark Street Development. As you know, we are the owners of the property, and we have been for seven years now. When we acquired the property, many of you will recall that it was zoned R3, and there was a previously approved PUD for 300 units of residential on the property. We actually, at that time, Clark Street is a commercial developer, a retail developer, we thought we could defy gravity, and we thought we could rehabilitate the shopping center. That failed, of course, with the Caputo's bankruptcy. What I want to emphasize to you is, after that point, for a period of two years, we marketed the property for lease for commercial, entertainment, and retail uses. We used in-house brokers, we used outhouse brokers, we met, I think, quarterly with staff and Mayor Tom Rooney at the time, and kept them updated. It was only after that period where we said, hey, this is, there's no commercial demand for the property, we're going to put it up for sale. Property was actually marketed for sale twice, with 18 months in between. Once was the South Bay, and second, of course, is the Taylor Morrison guys. Each time, there were three categories of buyers. There were no commercial offers. There were senior living offers, there were garden apartment offers, and there were for-sale townhome offers. So, I think you guys, we know what happened to the South Bay Senior Living Project, it's been requested of me by council, and we respected that, not to bring garden apartments. We're down to the last bucket. So, I'm here tonight just to answer any questions, as are the Taylor Morrison guys, and I wanted to mention to you, Mayor, I had the privilege last week of speaking to the Notre Dame Law School, their property class, and we talked about zoning, of all things. And so, this was one of the several examples I used, but I did invite the Notre Dame Law School class to join us tonight, so they're watching online.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Notre Dame. The next signatory is Steve Hollish.
My name is Steve Hollish. I live at 4811 Deepwood Lane, and I just wanted to speak, I can't speak any more eloquently than the past two speakers, on why Taylor Morrison should go ahead with their plan. I agree with it. We've seen this going so long, and gone through so many hoops, that this is the best advantage. We should let them go ahead, do second reading tonight, y'all should approve it, and let's get on with filling that property, because it's going to make the area look better, and improve Rolling Meadows. The thing I wanted to really speak about is, on the consent ordinance tonight, you've got a new regulation for non-union employees, and hopefully, all of you will look at this in a really strong view, because it says that the staff brought this up on March 26th. I don't recall much discussion on it, but they said they want to avoid first reading tonight, and go right to second reading, so they can implement this May 1st. I don't think that's a good idea. This is sounding very strange, why somebody wants to avoid the process, just to get it in by a certain date. I've looked at certain things in this, I've discussed this with my aldermen, and there's certain conditions on it that don't make any sense. The accrual time, I don't have a problem with, as far as vacations. It's the sick time that really gets the point. In the union discussion, it says 180 hours. That's way too much. Most companies and other places say that your accrual rate should be a combination of sick time and vacation time, and it should be combined the same way, and you take in what you want, and should not be carried over more than 40 hours from year to year. You can accrue 80 hours for your vacation time, but you only get to carry over 40. So, hopefully, you look at this in a really strong view, postpone it, maybe rewrite it, and then vote on it, so it's in a timely fashion, and maybe put it in June 1st, instead of May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. The next signatory is Dale Engelking.
You got it right.
Thank you, sir. Took me a number of years. If you would please name and address.
Name Dale Engelking, 3206 Plum Grove Drive, Rolling Meadows. I'm here tonight to mainly thank the aldermen that did not make it. I want to thank you for your time, and we, residents, appreciate the time that you do devote for us. With that being said, I think that we should wait with this vote, the second vote, because the residents did speak, and I think we should leave it up to the new alderman and alderlady to make the decision, because some won, some lost. So, I mean, I think it should be fair to let the new council make the final decision, because they are the ones that won. So, with that being said, too, Mr. Mayor, I think you should allow more than the 20 minutes, because we do have probably quite a few people that want to speak, and I think everybody should be heard. So, I'll keep it short. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next signatory, I'm Mark Melhop? Mark, thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark Melhop. I live 3003 Hawk Lane. I'd like to congratulate all the new members of the council. The reason I'm here is because I vote no for Taylor Morrison, number one, because I brought to the city manager's attention that when it was up for sale, when Clark Street Development had it, you couldn't even get through the number. If you're trying to sell something, and you can't get through, how can you sell it? So, and my instinct, I do construction, I heard about it through the union, that in 2021, the housing market's going to crash, and it's going to go down, and then you start on a project like that, you'll end up burying over the foundations, like I did in a Wheaton project. And Wheaton is more money-involved area. So, I vote no for the project. Thanks.
Thank you for coming forward to speak tonight. The next signatory is Bob Beloche. Thank you for coming forward, and your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Bob Beloche. I live at 2903 Starling Lane, in Ward 4. And I'm here simply to state my support for the Taylor Morrison Project, as it's currently proposed. I think the previous speakers have done a great job of highlighting the mostly pros and perhaps a few cons, and so, quite simply, my family is for it, it fills a space. I live in that ward, and I'd urge the council to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward tonight. The next signatory is Patricia Callahan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I just want to put my measuring tape here, so you guys can see if we can...
Ms. Callahan?
Just a second. Let me show you where, 12 feet is. Get the visual here. Mom's speaking, I just want you guys to see that. That's 12 feet.
Ms. Callahan? I need, Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
I need your name and address, please. Please.
3400 Wellington Court.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the plan for the Dominic slot, 106 townhomes. This 12-foot gap here, that is the average gap between the row homes, that's 12 feet. So, I just want you guys to see that. Where is the green space for children to play, toss the ball to one another, a mom to play with their toddler, and a dad to practice sports with their child? The average age of a Rolling Meadows resident is 38 years old. Families will be the core purchase group of these townhomes. Please tell me where the green space is to allow families to play with their children, and to enjoy an outdoor lifestyle. A 20-foot gap is from the residential property lines, where the privacy for longstanding residents. You're going to have two-story townhomes up against their property lines, from their property line 20 feet, and then they're going to have a two-foot, two-story property, townhome behind them. And then, if you look at the plans, you've got 28 units to the west, and there's just a handful of visitor parking spaces. Taylor Morrison's plan is for nothing but pure profit. It's a disaster for our city. Residential does not bring commerce. It's the other way around. Did commerce come after building Kimball Square, or Kimball Meadows? Riverwalk Condos, that's where I live, there's 154 units there. Did any commerce come after Lexington Crossing? No. And once we fill that Dominic space, where we have a chance for commerce, or even mixed uses with both residential and commerce, but once we put all residential there, or with that small gap in the front, for some commerce, that's it. We have no place to grow commerce. That's it. Commerce creates a stronger tax base than residential. Placing all residential on our last piece of property in the downtown that Kimball Hill built will be destroyed. Rolling condos from Oriole to Owl along Kirchhoff, I don't think you guys want that. The people who are leaving this council is your legacy, to create that, because that's what... what it's become. We had a bowling alley, and that's gone. We've had stores, and they're gone, and now we have rolling condos. And I just, there's no commerce. All those have been built, and the commerce hasn't come. And if we build townhouses, the commerce isn't gonna come, because there's no room. Thank you.
The next signatory is Carol, is it Allison? Elaine, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Carol Elaine, 2302 Oak Lane. As I requested in my email this morning to all council members, please vote no on two issues tonight. Note to the lighted sign install, and note to the design of the new homes to be placed on the Dominics lot. In that email, I requested that the city council take a step back and scale back unnecessary future big spending at this time, until it is sure that the fire station budgets are not any worse than currently forecasted. Trust me when I know that contracts have been written and measures attempted to be put in place to avoid cost overruns, but nothing is ever set in stone with construction. Anything can change, so let's be wise about large expenses, and really, that really add no return on investment to our city. As for the Dominics lot, I have been a longtime supporter against so many homes on the Dominics land, and even more so now that I attempted, I attempted a visual comparison. You were provided in your email, and I do have additional markup copies, of what I was attempting to show by comparing the land and building space between the East Park Apartments and the New Meadows Square site. I provided two Google Map photos in the same scale of the two land bases. I eyeballed how the land spaces would overlap to better give a gauge of what fits using what I now can attempt to be as close as possible. If you overlay what Taylor Morrison has proposed, you will see that maybe 16 of the East Park buildings will fit into the Dominics lot. There are about 22 of them. Oh, yeah. There are 22 Taylor Morrison buildings. I don't know the exact same, I don't know the score footage of the East Park Apartment buildings, but it's only based on the gauge of a visual that I have. There will be no green space. So just really quick, this is East Park. This is Dominics. If you kind of overlay it, right about here is about the space that you'll see. If I go and take Taylor Morrison, which I didn't have a chance to color it in, you're going to be so congested with no green space in there. There are concerns about losing a sidewalk bike, yeah. There are concerns about losing a sidewalk type bike path. Are there city legal guarantees that these will not end up as rentals in 10 to 20 years down the road? Do we realize how much competition this site will have now against the new Schaumburg Motorola site and the downtown Arlington Heights site that they just approved? There are too many questions and unknowns that need to be carefully reevaluated, and should be a sidelined topic for the next meeting or two down the road, possibly with the new council. It needs to truly ensure that this will not be a detriment to the future city leaders and dwellers. We residents have waited a decade-plus for this lot to become something great for the city. A few more months won't matter. I know that it was explained to me that the city may have to pay millions in legal fees to cancel this. I did not, I'm not meaning any malice to the person who gave me that information, and I'm not educated enough on that sort of thing, but I'm not naive enough not to do or have that further research to confirm that this is indeed fact, based on some formal report by a legal entity. I'm not asking to stop the design phase. Sadly, that ship has sailed unless a miracle happens tomorrow. I'm only asking that this be sidelined and sent back to the developer to be a much more smaller area than it is now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Annette Zaffron.
Good evening, all. I just want, oh, my name is Annette Zaffron, 2309 Central Road. First of all, April 2nd was a very interesting day. I'm sure all of you were keyed to your computers and whatnot, trying to follow all the details of the election results. For those of you that did accomplish your goal, congratulations. We look forward to you serving our city. To those of you that will be leaving us, we send you a sincere thanks for the great job you have done while you were on our council. You gave your time, your energy, you gave your knowledge, and we appreciate that as residents. We hope in your future that you find other fulfilling things to do with your time and help our city. I also would hope that tonight's council makes a motion to table the discussion on the second reading of the Taylor Morrison homes. I think we're all kind of resigned, one way or another, that it's not going to be a big-box business area any longer, but surely, there must be a way that we can look at the plans a little more closely, and that should be left to the new council. They will bring new ideas, maybe not change what we're going to accomplish there, but maybe give it a little bit more planning. As people are saying, it is going to be a dense area with a lot of housing. And as the previous speakers mentioned, Mount Prospect, and Schaumburg, and Arlington, and Palatine, yes, they are building a lot, because people use those locations to get on the train, to go to their jobs. We don't have a train station in Rolling Meadows. People will depend on their cars to get back and forth to work. We don't have a great entertainment area, like all those other mentioned suburban areas. So what is the draw here? We have very little. Okay, so we will have new homes. We're going to have more children entering our schools. Who's gonna take that burden on? Residents will have to have their property taxes increased to fund the education of children. 106 homes, that could mean like 50 more kids. Doesn't sound like a large number, but it is a big impact on our school system. Secondly, those children from Schaumburg, and Arlington, and Palatine do come to our schools. So that's another impact. More housing everywhere is going to not help us, it will hurt us. So please, present council members, table the discussion, give ourselves a chance. Residents have spoken for and against. Let us take the time to look at the plan, maybe tweak it a bit, maybe we don't need 106 homes there. Maybe 80 would do fine. We'd have green space, we would have a lovely little community. But please, council, pass it on, pass the torch on to the new people. You've done your job, you don't need this to make a legacy, and we don't know who you promised things to, but let it end tonight. Move on, and let the new council have its say. Thank you.
That was the last signatory for this evening. The council moves to his first order of business, which is the consent ordinance is in for a second reading. Ordinance number 19-25 is to adopt the city's 2019 Comprehensive Land Use Plan update. This ordinance would adopt the proposed update to the city's Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The 2019 Comprehensive Plan update has been prepared by the city's planning consultants, TESCA Associates, during a nine-month period of time from June 20, June 2018 to March 2019. Public engagement efforts included online webpage access, focus groups, workshops, public hearings. This plan is intended to be a guide for the tool for evaluating future land use, development, and redevelopment proposals considered by the city. This document is available for viewing online at www.planforrollingsmeadows.org. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Bud Matts has made that?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
At the last reading of this, I asked if we could consider bids to get this translated into Spanish. Since then, I've furnished those to Mr. Crumstock, and he's indicated that it could be done after bidding process for less than $10,000, it appears. So I'd like to amend this motion to say that we would, in addition to approving this, that we would instruct the city manager to get bids, so that it can be, as well as being presented in English, it can be presented in Spanish, so that we can reach even more of the members of our community, and that they can get this once every 10-year document in their preferred language as well.
Second, yes, Mr. Crumstock?
Mr. Mayor, obviously, before the second is out there, so a new section four would be created, stating that the city manager would be allowed to translate this to Spanish within about $10,000, giving me that lead weight. But again, it would be a new section four, and then section five would be where it talks about an ordinance shall be printed and just covering everything. So I just wanted to make that clarification in your motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Bud Matts, are you comfortable with that?
I'm great with it.
Thank you.
A second?
Mr. Mayor?
If you were to ask for a second, Mr. Mayor, I second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the amendment for Mr. Bud Matts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question, I could swear, with some even federal-level documents, the story unfolded as, let's spend a lot of money translating it, and then Google Docs can translate it the push of a button. Is there, have we looked into that?
Because of the amount of wordage and verbiage, and also additional graphics and everything, no, it's not just Google Translate. So that's why it does take professionals to do this, and I do appreciate Alderman Bud Matts and the resident who gave additional information, and then actually, TESCA has asked for some, we're just going to make sure that it's apples-to-apples what we're actually doing, but it's just not a Google Translate.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on Mr. Bud Matts' amendment to this ordinance?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majakis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, that amendment is approved. We now go back to the original ordinance. Is there any discussion? Is there a first on the original ordinance to be passed as amended by Mr. Bud, Mr. Bud Matts? I'm sorry, was that?
Yes, I, I'll move.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm a little bit confused, Mr. Mayor. I thought we were already gonna vote on it already.
We, he amended this, so now we're voting as amended.
So we're voting on the whole, I polled?
The whole, yes, correct.
So have you asked for discussion on that part of it yet?
I was, I asked for a second, and you seconded it?
I'm sorry. Thank you for explaining to me, thank you.
And then, is there a discussion on this? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You know, I had a discussion with a little bit of staff and our lawyer today, and there's a couple of issues that I brought up, that they would like to investigate a little bit thorough, more thoroughly. So with that, I would ask that we just postpone this to the next meeting to finally approve it, just to make sure we get those things worked out. So I'm asking to postpone it to our next meeting, please.
Okay. Do I have a second, Mr. Cannon?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Majakis has made a second. Is there a discussion on the postponement? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majakis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this item is postponed to the next meeting. This brings us to item B. Ordinance number 19-26 is to approve the amendment to the Continental Towers Plan Development for Electrical Vehicle Charging Stations at 1701 Gulf Road. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow amendment to the existing Continental Towers Plan Development to allow three electric vehicle charging stations in the parking lot. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Is there discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Deastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majakis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, that ordinance does go forward. This brings us to ordinance number 19-27 is to approve the final plan development for 2819, 2915 Kirchhoff Road, the Meadow Squares. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the proposed Meadow Square Plan Development for the 9.5 acres of property currently known as 2018, 19, 2019, 15 Kirchhoff Road, to allow the construction of 106 townhomes and row homes, per the plot of subdivisions submitted by Taylor Morrison, approved on 3/26/2019, per resolution-19-r-50. Before I ask for a motion, there was a item brought before the council before the meeting, cleaning up some paperwork on this, so I'm gonna ask our legal attorney to please clarify that the changes that were made. Mr. McCall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting about 5 o'clock yesterday afternoon, I was contacted by the developer's attorney. He was looking to add some clarifications to the ordinance. During the day, I had further conversations with the developer's attorney, the city manager, and also the Fred Vought, the Director of Public Works. The changes are clarifications, they're not substantive. I just got these at about 6 o'clock this evening. They were distributed for the benefit of the council. I'd like to read into the record, at least, those portions that have been added to the ordinance that was distributed as part of the packet. The first change, and there are three, is the fifth whereas clause, which is at the bottom of the first page. At the first sentence, after the word "development," the following language would be added, "meets the criteria for approval in section 122-dash, it should be 266, of the Code of Ordinances, City of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, and," and that's that particular amendment. The next is on the second page of section 1 of the ordinance, at the first line, after the word "development," it would read, quote, comma, "as depicted on the layout plan, comma, prepared by V3 Companies and dated February 22, 2019, comma, with the design criteria as specifically depicted on said documentation," close quote. That would be the end of that addition. Finally, section 2 of the ordinance, on the second line, excuse me, after the word "conditions," what would be added would be, comma, "which shall serve as guarantees to the city," colon, in that close quote, and that would be the end of those three additions. So the developer's asking that the council approve the ordinance as I have, as proposed, and as they've amended, as I've read into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. So as we're going forward with this ordinance, it's the copy that you had in your packet in addition to what Mr. McCall read, so is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr.. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a discussion as amended? Mr.?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Bud Matts. Yes, sir.
So the piece of paper that we received at 6 o'clock originally said 122-226 for the Code of Ordinances, which would have given it a height of 45 feet, according to the M1 Manufacturing District. And I'm assuming that the property is not in the M1 Manufacturing District, although I do think that the property, based on the scale drawing that I have provided by Taylor Morrison, may end up being close to 45 feet. So it's really disappointing to get documents like this one hour or less before the city council meeting, and it seems to be a string of things of this nature on this project. In talking with people on the Planning and Zoning Commission, they said that the plans that they had, they felt were, I mean, in the commentary, it says that they were incomplete, and they were uncomfortable voting for it, based on the fact that the plans that they had to review were not complete. I did look at this document for elevation B, and the scale drawing shows 46 foot in width for the first two left-hand sections, and if you take that same 46 feet, that's exactly how high it is from the street level to the top of the roof. And this property has been rezoned R4, per the previous request, which offers us no more than a 39-foot height. So I'm really confused as to, this is moving so fast, and it really feels like, literally, we might as well write it in pencil and then just erase. So I would, I would really like to have us get a So I would really like to have us get an ordinance that's written the right way in a drawing that really shows what the final height of the property is really, really going to be, because I don't want to, I don't want to come back later and offer a variance or be asked for a variance. When we discussed this property with Taylor Morrison, they told us that they were coming with a full baked cake, and that there wasn't going to be any discussion on it, and that it was take it or leave it. And quite honestly, that's the way I feel about it. And so if we're going to approve this, it's a fully baked cake, and if it's going to be, you come back to me later and say, I really need 45 feet because it doesn't fit, I'm going to tell you, cut the roof off. It doesn't matter to me, make it flat. And so, but your drawings show that's how tall it is. And so I'd really like to have a done deal on a drawing which shows heights and elevations and not just partials before I could approve it. So I'd like to make a motion that we get, table this until we get an ordinance that's written not with red ink, that has the wrong numbers on it and drawings that are incomplete. So if that can happen by the next meeting, I'm all in favor of voting for this and giving it full consideration at the next meeting. In addition, I asked at the last meeting to talk about the width of the bike path and that it be retained. It didn't go before the environmental committee, it went before the traffic committee as in the packet, and the traffic committee didn't make a decision about it. They wanted further information from the police department and others. So we still don't have the information I asked the last time that this came up at the last meeting. And so I think that if they want their property to look further away from the street by cutting down the sidewalk, they could make it look further away from the street by moving it further away from the street. So I would really appreciate it if we could get a final drawing and put this off until the next meeting, and that would be if they want to move quick, so do I. So let's get it done, but let's have a final drawing and a written ordinance that's not with pencils and scratch outs and the whole nine yards. So I'm asking, making a motion, looking for a second, that it be tabled.
Okay, for the?
Till the next meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second on Mr. Budmats?
I second, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gallo has seconded. Is there a discussion on this?
There's no discussion on a motion to table.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Williams?
No.
Cannon?
No.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majakis?
No.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
No.
Deastis?
No.
Okay, with five opposed and two, that motion fails. Is there a discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
I do want to say that there was a great deal of opinions for this project, but I do have to say, in record, on record, in emails, for every one individual that emailed me for this project moving forward, six others voiced their oppositions. So it is a six to one in writing. The other thing is that some of my comments were taken, not necessarily out of context because they are definitely in context in terms of a thesis by a doctoral candidate in 2002. Though the information is from 2002, the equations and formulas that were used to determine whether or not the proportion of residential versus commercial space and its inverse relationship to the amount of detriment it causes for increased expenses on a community are still relevant today. So I do want to make it known that the information, though it's 2002 publication, the equation is absolutely relevant. And though it's in Michigan, the entire thesis was written to discuss what happens in one state based on the research of all 48 states in the contiguous nation. So though it seems like it might be small and myopic in scale, it's very large, and the bottom line is that if we move forward with this, we do jeopardize any sort of opportunity to revitalize our downtown location, and this will cost us future dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Cannon.
Just like to point out that the paper we're talking about was written in 2002, but the data behind it was gathered from 1981 to 1995. We all might recall that in 1995, the Dominic Store we had there was considered a state-of-the-art store. Some of you might remember, they actually had video carts in there that were unique to the country. We had people all over the country flying in to see a state-of-the-art, future store, and you see that they failed there eventually. And I would just say that when you have data from the 1995s, does anybody question whether the retail environment has changed at all since 1995? Amazon didn't even exist then, or they were a smidgen of what they are right now. I live on the west side of town, there's a strip center at the corner of Quinton and Euclid. Right now, 2/3 of the old Dominic Store is empty, it's been empty for years now. Besides that, there's 12 storefronts that have been empty. At one time, that was an ideal setting. They had a flower shop in there, they had a jewelry store, they had a photo shop, they had all kinds of wonderful stores that we would all like. I think every person sitting up here, I won't speak for any of them but myself, would love to have commercial there. The reality is, we had one of the best commercial real estate guys in the country owning the property, and he could get no one who was interested in it. I think we have to be realistic that commercial is not going to come back in there. It doesn't make any difference if you like it or not, that's just the reality of the marketplace. So I would just remind everybody to think about the data we're talking about from 1995 and if it's relevant today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr.?
Last by the devil.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could I just ask, is your second bite, let Mr. Deastis have his first bite.
Sure. I make a motion called question.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I need, will the clerk call the roll? He seconded, yes. Mr. Williams has seconded.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
No, let him speak.
Okay.
Majakis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose, the question is to call the motion for a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
No.
Majakis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majakis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, that ordinance does pass. This brings us to the consent ordinances, the next items on the agenda, it consists of two items, D and E. Any aldermen wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider two ordinances. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there, ordinance D is number 19-00 to amend the city's personnel rules and regulations for non-union employees, it's the first reading. The ordinance, if adopted, would amend certain sections of the personnel rules and regulations relating to the earning of sick leave and vacation accrual for tier number two, non-union and non-s sworn employees hired after November 2, 2010, and not covered by a collective bargaining contract. E, ordinance number 19, would amend the city's pay plan. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the classification for the assistant to the city matter position to a C4 salary range for fiscal year 2019. The question is, shall these two ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majakis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves in for the second reading. This brings us to F, the next item of business is to motion to approve the warrant from the April 9, 2019, as presented by the finance committee. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Baner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the warrant? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majakis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, that warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda consists of four items, on the consent resolutions, consists of four items. G through D, does any alderman wish to remove any item on the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider all resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Baner. The question is, shall all resolutions be adopted? Resolution number 19-r-53 is to approve update to the city's investment policy. This resolution, if adopted, would formalize the framework for the City of Rolling Meadows' investment activities. The city's investment policy has not been updated for some time. This update is to include language to be in compliance with municipal security rules as well as applicable state and federal statutes that were recently approved. Resolution number 19-r-54 is to authorize the execution of a property use agreement with the Rolling Meadows Community Church. This resolution, excuse me, this resolution, if adopted, would approve an agreement between the city and the Rolling Meadows Community Church, which provides for the city's use of a portion of the church property for the 2019 city market events, one time per month, May through September. Resolution I is number 19-r-55 is to amend the fiscal year 2019 budget, accept the 2019 general obligation bonds, series number 2019, debit service schedule. This resolution, if adopted, would amend the fiscal year 2019 budget to accept the 2019 general obligation bonds, series number 2019, debt services schedule, and to add the debt service payments to the newly created 2019 debit service fund. J, resolution number 19-r-56 is to authorize for the replacement of a public works safety trench shore trailer. This resolution, if adopted, authorize a contract with AirHarks RV Trailer Sales displaying Zellmark for the replacement of a safety trench shoring cargo trailer, RM105, for the Public Works Department. Again, the question is, shall all four resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majakis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, all resolutions have been passed. The mayor has no appointments and no proclamations, the city clerk has no items for tonight, community items of interest, Mr. Budmats, not Mr. Budmats, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council and Alderman Budmats, I'll use your voice for this one, obviously. Obviously, we do have one to add, it was in the Friday letter, it came out after I had already done the topics to mention, but we do want to, do want to thank everybody, as the mayor mentioned, who came to the Chamber of Commerce Chili Challenge with a twist. There were six chilis, as everybody knows, one from the police chief, obviously one from the fire chief, one from the fire department shift, and they're actually the same shift that's on duty right now, plus three restaurants, we hope to grow it. The plan tentatively right now is to have this chili contest with a twist actually at the stadium next year. So if you have some other ideas and you have, want to participate, please contact the chamber. Obviously, we do want to mention, it was a great day on Sunday at Rep's Place, and we do want to mention them, Rep's Place, because they actually won for the most traditional chili. So spicy, and overall, over here, traditional at Rep's Place. We do want to mention that St. Collette's School, 3900 Pheasant Drive, will be conducting an auction and vintage spring market on Saturday, April 13. That happens from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. To attend, it has a cost for $2 for adult, and kids are free. I do not know what is considered a kid, but you might have to contact St. Collette on that one. We do want to mention that Anna's Red Apple, that is something that comes all the time to staff, when are they going to be starting for dinners? They are scheduled to start on Monday, April 22. They are located at 2121 South Plum Grove Road. We do want to mention that the Second Annual Business and Community Showcase will be conducted on Thursday, April 25. This year, we will be at the Meridian Banquets, that's 1701 West Algonquin Road. 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. is the business-to-business section, we'll have more about that in just a little bit. And then 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., it's actually open to the public, and obviously Martha Corner across the way from me, if you have a business or you know of a business who has not decided to participate, please contact, we still have room over there. We do want to mention that Earth Day activities are set for April 27, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. If you would like to participate, please come to Old Public Works, that's 3200 Central Road, for additional information, please contact Public Works at 847-963-0500, or I did see Karen Gil walk in at the end, she is in the back with the red shirt, you can always contact her, and she will tell you about the Environmental Day activities. Then we do want to mention that, as the friendly reminder, that yard waste collection and street sweeping has started throughout the city. If you want additional information, again, contact Public Works. Then obviously, because it's April, it's one of the off months from our printed, we do want to mention that the April electronic news and views, or what we call the E News and Views, is out there. You do have to visit the city website at citirm.org, click on News and View tab, and then that will bring you to the electronic E News and Views. Again, this is our sister publication, or the printed News and Views, and we do have additional information. The one item that I do want to add, and that's actually a reminder, on the second floor, we do have a gray box, it's a prescription drug takeback, it's through Cook County, but we actually partner with the DEA twice a year, and we have a takeback for unwanted prescription drugs going to happen on Saturday, April 27, here in the front lot of City Hall. It will happen between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. There are no questions, you can drop off any kind of prescriptions. What they do not take are liquid prescriptions. And again, what we try to reiterate people is that we do have a box here, you can drop it off 24/7, you can always get buzzed in and drop it off too, but if you do have an accumulation, please, it's a great opportunity through the DEA or through the City of Rolling Meadows to remove prescription drugs. It's not a good thing just to dump them into the sewers or drop them off. It's a great opportunity, we will have one more opportunity to mention that. Those are the items of interest, Mr. Mayor and the city council.
Thank you. Martha, is Martha up next?
Thank you. Excuse me?
Yes, Martha.
Thank you, Mayor. The city staff team is continuing to coordinate the Second Annual City of Rolling Meadows' Business and Community Showcase, to be held on Thursday, April 25, at Meridian Banquets and Conference Center at 1701 Algonquin Road. This event, open to the public and free of charge, will run from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. For the Rolling Meadows Business Community, there will be a closed business-to-business networking hour for all business and community groups participating in the showcase, as networking hour for all business and community groups participating in the showcase, as well as Rolling Meadows Business Representatives that can visit without prior registration. That networking session will run from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The showcase is set up so local businesses can network and show their services and products to residents and other leaders. This is a great way to shop and learn about Rolling Meadows businesses in a relaxed environment. If you have a licensed business in the city of Rolling Meadows or know of a business and want to attend, please contact me, the business advocate. To date, 35 businesses or community groups are currently registered to host displays, and registrations are continuing to come in. Please note that we have as many tables as we need to make this event a success to accommodate every business that's interested. To further enhance the showcase experience, we have the benefit of the Northwest Concert Band playing music in the lobby, including selections such as Dixieland Jazz. Businesses are welcome to provide various items to the guests at the event, including samples, bands, coupons, calendars, et cetera. The city will also be giving away special items at the door. Finally, we, as always, would like to thank the Community Events Foundation for their volunteer support and time to support the businesses and other activities during the showcase event. We very much look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you.
Mr. Vogt, traffic review.
Thank you, Mayor. The traffic review committee met last week on April 3. I'll highlight four things for the city council's information. Kirchhoff Road, the corridor traffic signal improvements are just about complete, and as you may have noticed, hard not to notice, the construction barrels are out on the street, and Arrow Road Construction, who is our contractor for that project, is starting to mobilize, and you'll see a whole lot more activity on that roadway in the upcoming couple of months. We are sending notices out to residents and to businesses regarding construction schedule anticipated. Traffic Review Committee also continues to discuss the guardrail request from Preserves at Woodfield at the Arbor Drive 90-degree curve. The city engineer is going to put a proposal together to further study that. We also may talk to the adjacent community of Schaumburg, as they are on the other side of the street, and hope to partner with them to come up with a solution on this matter in the near future. Fourth item was the result of an effort to, by the Public Works Department regarding a guardrail on Wilkie Road backing up to Killarney Court. We had a neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago. We've had the traffic review committee look at this, we've had the city engineer again look at this, police chief and myself. We think there's some compromise to try to satisfy the desires of the residents there that aren't all consistent with regards to what they want to see, with regards to the trees, but they do seem to be consistent with regards to wanting the guardrail to remain, and we can accommodate that. So there will be a follow-up meeting scheduled in the next two weeks on that matter for the residents in that area. Lastly, just as a follow-up regarding Meadow Drive and the question about the existing 10-foot sidewalk bike path that's on the east side of the road, adjacent to the Taylor Morrison development and the proposal to replace it with a 5-foot sidewalk. We have had discussion on that. We will have continuing discussions on that. The city engineer will be looking at bike path alternatives with regards to bike lanes, et cetera. We will discuss this again at our May meeting. We are also going to have this on the environmental committee agenda when they meet next Tuesday, April 16. So more to come. Staff believes that this is an item that can and should be handled with the final engineering plan approvals for Taylor Morrison when we get to that point. So that's the traffic review committee report for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. In tonight's city council packet, we are releasing the budget planning calendar for the 2020 proposed budget, and we're also releasing the 2020 to 2024 capital improvement plan calendar as well. And the reason we're doing this is we're beginning work now on the 2020 proposed budget, believe it or not, and we are also working on the capital plan in full earnest. Our ad hoc capital improvements committee has been meeting since February and will continue to meet until the budget process. We are also, wanted to highlight a few key items in the actual calendar, which is in the packet itself. In June, our city auditors will present the city's 2018 audit, along with the citizens' financial reports as well. We also will have a police and fire pension fund actuarial discussion that will take place as well from our actuary, Lauderbach &amp; Amon, and then our city auditors will then also be there for our audit presentation, Lauderbach &amp; Amon. Another key date is September 10, 2019. With the September 10 city council packet, we release the 2020 proposed budget, and we will have hearings on the budget's tax levy and as well for the proposed budget. We also will have a series of committee of the whole meetings as usual, and also what we do is have our one-on-one council meetings as well. So we wanted to release that to the city council and also to the public. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock.
I guess it's really simple, the April cow is canceled.
Thank you very much. Other matters not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cannon.